Time is 7:03, we'll bring the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Classes. Do we have any additions to the agenda? Our declaration of ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias? Nothing? Alright, we do have public comments, I gotta read this. Public comment, "The council will now receive public comment, we value the time and initiative of members of the public to take, to share their thoughts with the council. The council's role during public comment is not to immediately respond, but to listen. If there's follow-up necessary, we will direct city staff to do so. Remember that we all model the way for our community, and we ask that everyone share their thoughts respectfully. Those who have completed a request for recognition form will be called, one at a time, to step forward and state their name and city of residence." Please note, the speakers will have three minutes to express their thoughts. So, William Martinak? Hopefully I pronounced your name right. Just hit the button on your, there you go, so you got a green light?
Yes, I do. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is William Martinak, I'm the managing member of JCNW Family LLC, and just wanted to share with you tonight some news. We've been working pretty hard this summer to bring a final resolution to a decades-old issue between JCNW and the city of Stateon. So, we've taken time, we've, JCNW, we have partnered with Randy Myers and Brownstone Homes to acquire the necessary easements that we need to construct the final off-site phase of the drainage system for Phillips Estates Phase Two, which has been under the stop work orders for about 10 years now. And then also, there's some land in Phase Three that we will propose to develop later. So, anyway, we're working together with city staff to bring that system hopefully to fruition yet this fall, and get the system completed that will convey the storm drain water out to Mill Creek and resolve the issues that we've been struggling with for nearly a decade. And Mr. Myers, he was scheduled to be here tonight too, and he had a conflict that he couldn't get out of, so, anyway, I'm speaking for him and on his behalf. And, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, William.
Okay, thank you.
That's great news, Bill, thanks. Alright, James Loftus, Lofton, right? Did I say that right? Loftus, sorry.
Good evening. Mayor Pro Tem, council members. My name is James Loftus, I'm a former city councillor here for the city of Stateon, a former nominee for Marion County Commissioner, ran a government surveillance and political intelligence organization for about 13 years. I'm the owner of the Gardner House Cafe and Bed and Breakfast, and the director of a micro-space museum, JPL Museum, which is located inside. I've been here about 20 years, and this last summer, I built almost a 1,600 square-foot deck. I put up some lattice so I'd have some privacy, put a gazebo in, and over the last several months, I've been doing prayers and exercises in my front yard. On September 9th, in the early evening, about 9 o'clock, Officer Beavens rolls up on me and is yelling at me, and I cannot hear him, because I have a headset in. When his volume is sufficiently to overcome the music that I was listening to, he asks me, "Do I need medical attention?" I said, "No, I do not need medical attention." He said, "Hey buddy, come here, I want to talk to you." I said, "No, I'm not leaving my property, and I don't have to answer any of your questions. You need to leave, you're messing with my bliss and my enjoyment." So then he breaks the barrier and comes around his patrol car, the whole time I'm still sitting. He comes up onto my sidewalk and continues to engage, continues to entice me to get me off my property. This goes on for almost 20 minutes, before two other officers pull up. Now, I'm blinded by Officer Prindell or Pendell, I'm not sure how, what his name is yet, because I haven't been received the police report from his side of the story. Anyways, he rolls up, I'm blinded, it appears that he either has a gun, a taser, or a radio in his hand, I can't tell. So I move to put a tree between me and him, because at this point in time, I'm thinking, "Oh my God, I'm gonna get shot, tasered, or killed, simply for praying and exercising in my front yard." Well, when I take that step to put the tree between me and Officer Prindell, Beavens takes a step closer to me and sets his body to lunge at me, I'm looking at his eyes and I can tell that he is prepared to lunge at me and tackle me. I jump back, because as he steps onto my property to set himself for that lunge, I point out that you are now trespassing and have violated the Fourth Amendment. You need to leave. So I went from a state of confusion, to a little bit of irritation, to frustration, to aggravation. Now, on the 15th, Prindell rolls up around 9 o'clock onto my property, or across from my property, and takes up a surveillance position. I'm exercising and watering my garden. After enough time, I go over and videotape the encounter where I tell him this is an attempt to intimidate and harass me. Later that night, I'm going to accuse both of these officers that arrived of dereliction of duty, because I called 911, there was a guy clearly drunk, he fell down trying to get into the driver's seat of his car. The police rolled up, they're there less than three minutes, maybe five minutes, I don't know, it didn't time the encounter, all I know is that they told the guy to get in the backseat of his car and sleep it off. They didn't even take his keys and say, "Pick them up in the morning." These people have a problem, and it's a leadership problem. Now subsequently, we have a 1983 case right now, we have official oppression, and we have the chief of police that has denied me access under title, or excuse me, ORS 192345, Section 4-0, which is public interest. As far as I know, I am the public, and it is in my interest and in the city council's interest to have those videos released. Prior to this council meeting, I was given Beavens' police report, but in my FOI request, I asked for all of the police that encountered me. I was denied it, that's another official oppression. I'm going to ask the council to rescind the chief's authority by denying me those videos and have them released to me. I will not go to the DA and file an appeal. If you want me to file a lawsuit, I'll file it against the city. I would prefer not to, but if that is the course of action, I am prepared to file a tort claim action. Now, this is the summary of Officer Beavens' report. Again, he never articulated the complaint, or at least in a way I could understand. "Do you need medical attention? No, go away." "When I arrived in the area, I observed what appeared to be a person in shorts and barefoot under a gazebo. I got out of my car and made contact with the male, who was the owner of the property, so he knows who I am. Mr. Loftus was angry the police were there, only after being agitated. It appeared Mr. Loftus was doing yoga. No, I was praying and doing exercises in Kung-Fu." And that is the nose, I'm assuming noise, the CP, heard Mr. Loftus went on about the incident at Summerfest and how I needed to have the sheriff's office investigate. No, that is not true. I'm still seated, this is going on for now about five minutes, and I tell him, as a city councillor, Sergeant Meeks put a recall Loftus sign in his front yard, and I said that if I've done anything wrong, the state and PD needs to bring in an outside investigative authority, because there is a potential for bias and discrimination. So this officer continues to harass me."
I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, just point of order, Mr. Loftus has been speaking for well beyond three minutes.
I only have one more sentence of his report.
It's up to council whether or not you choose to allow more testimony, but I just wanted to point that out.
If you got one more sentence, go ahead and finish it.
This is, "I tried to reason with Mr. Loftus and explain why I was there. Mr. Loftus requested a copy, and I told him I would keep, I would make a formal request for Mr. Loftus, was unhappy with my answer and stated, 'I need to tell the chief of my formal request,' and I walked away to do to the conversation." He didn't walk away because of that, he walked away because he trespassed.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus.
It's on video, and I want the videos. I'm asking you, the council, because you can override the chief, to stop the official oppression, Title 18, Section 242, you're on notice, you're city council, you can ask the city lawyer, and he will advise you that you're violating my rights. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Is that, that's it? Alright, consent agenda, we have regular session minutes, work session minutes from the 30th of September, appointing Kim Dwyer to the Public Arts Commission, and Resolution Number 1117, establishing the National Incident Management System, NIMS, as a standard for incident management in Stateon, Oregon.
Mayor Pro Tem, this is Counselor Patty, I move that we accept as presented.
Second.
Any, we don't need discussion on that one.
Real quick, I do want to say thank you to Kim for serving on the Public Arts Commission, that is badly needed, and I appreciate her service.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, motion carries. Do we have any presentations? No presentations. So, general business, council declaration of mayoral vacancy.
Yes, so as I believe everybody knows, Mayor Quigley provided his resignation to us for medical reasons, per the charter, basically, there are only a few things that can happen where it is actually automatic, and his was not a qualifying automatic resignation, so council will need to declare that there is a vacancy, and then, as we have discussed in our special work session last week, council does not have to immediately take action to fill that vacancy. Ultimately, the council will need to appoint a mayor to fill out the remainder of Mayor Quigley's term, but that isn't necessary right of way. Council President Sims is the council president, and per the charter, he would act as mayor in the event that the mayor is unable to perform his duties, so, but in order just to formally accept Brian's resignation, you would need to declare a vacancy, and I believe you can just do that via motion and a vote.
Do we have any motions?
I'm making motion to declare a vacancy of the mayor's position.
I will second regrettably.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, definitely, I will say thank you to Mayor Quigley, he's probably watching the video, I would not be surprised, but yeah, it was definitely difficult seeing him leave, he did a really good job. Alright, next order of business, ordinance number 1069, modification of residency requirements for Public Arts Commission members. We have a staff report.
Yes, and this will be fairly quick, we did appoint somebody, or we, you, did appoint somebody to the Arts Commission via the consent agenda, which is wonderful, but we were having a hard time filling that commission, and one of the things that we heard is that there are actually several business owners or property owners that are very interested in serving, but they don't meet the residency requirements. So, based on council direction at a prior meeting, we modified, we proposed modifying the code to simply add that ability, that it needs to be a resident or business owner in Stateon to be eligible to be on the Arts Commission. So, with approval of this ordinance, that would modify the code and open up additional people to be eligible to serve on the commission.
How many vacancies do we have still, is it two? I think I saw two.
Yeah, I believe two with the appointment of Kim.
Counselor Sims.
Go ahead.
Can I make a, can I ask a clarifying question? So it says adding Stateon business or property owners to eligible makeup of the public Arts Commission, so your property doesn't have to be a residence, correct? It could be?
That's correct.
If you own property.
Right.
Just wanted to make sure that it wasn't just if you are a business owner or a resident.
Correct.
Any public comment on this? Looked like it. Council discussion, any more discussion from the council?
Yeah, Counselor Sims, yeah, I was, when we first discussed creating this commission, I was, already had concerns about the ability to fill these positions, and I know, so this is a step in the right direction, I think, for getting it filled. I don't know how many we think are needed to operate the commission, but we might as well just, once we get this going, hopefully we can get another member or two, but we'll just go with what we got for the meantime, so, and either way, I approve this ordinance, so.
Counselor Sims.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I have another question, so on number four, it says, the last sentence, "These five members of the commission shall reside." Okay, nevermind. I take it back. I read the rest of the sentence. I got.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna go ahead and move that we adopt ordinance 1069 as presented.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Because it's an ordinance, we need to have a roll vote, so if you could call for a roll vote.
Could we please have a roll vote?
Absolutely. Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Patty.
Yes.
Counselor Sims.
Yes.
Counselor Or.
Yes.
Counselor Gilio.
Yes.
Motion passes, 5 to 0.
Alright, the next is Resolution Number 1118, adopting the City of State and Employee Handbook, staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, before you tonight is consideration of adopting Resolution 1118, adopting a revised City of State and Employee Handbook. The last time that this was brought forward to you, some of you were here in 2020, well, here virtually, back then. It was adopted in the spring of 2020, and since that time, there's been several changes federally that need to be incorporated into the handbook, and both state and federal. So, I worked closely with CIS, City County Insurance Services, which has a human resource team, and they help with these modifications, making sure we're up to date. Additionally, there were some items that were in the handbook that are more of like a procedural of how we do things, and so we, Melanie and I have worked and have created a procedures manual that really lays out all that stuff, like for instance, how vacation carryover works, and how you can request to carry over your vacation if you have some that you might need to use early in the next year, those sorts of things. So, the draft handbook was circulated to, via email to all city employees, including department heads, everybody, for review, comments, and questions, and included in the packet is the final version of the handbook, and then a sheet that explains the major changes and why. And with that, that's all I have, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thanks, Alyssa. Is there any public comment on this? No public comment? It's open for council discussion. Very quiet.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Go ahead.
Yeah, unless there's any other questions, I'll move that we approve Resolution Number 1118 as presented.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Or do you need to roll again on, oh, okay, sorry about that. Aye, sorry. I shouldn't have let that stream of consciousness continue.
Motion passes, 5 to 0. Communication from city staff.
So I have a few things, one, I just wanted to acknowledge for the council, Mr. Loftus' comments, and I will consult with Ross and ensure that everything is copacetic, I don't know, that might be too big of a word for me, but, so I will, we will certainly consult and make sure that there aren't any issues. I have certainly talked with Gwen, and I don't believe that there are, but we'll just double, double check, so, I just wanted to let you know that we did listen and will follow up. I also wanted to do some announcements, on November 5th and 7th, the Public Works Crew are going to be removing some trees, or consulting to remove some trees, actually around the community center. In the back, they're, yeah, they're dropping things onto the roof and causing problems, and so I just wanted to let you know, just in part because it's our building, but also there might be public going, "Why are you removing those trees?", and so I just wanted you to know about that. Fall leaf cleanup is scheduled now for November 16th and December 14th, and we'll be doing outreach and working as we have in the past to let people know about that, and also working with the local church, I can't remember which one off the top of my head, Foothills, that helps coordinate cleanup for people that need support to clean up their leaves. Republic Services is also doing a bulky waste day on October 26th from 9 to 2. They provided us a flyer, and we're working to share that flyer, but just wanted to let you know as well, and to share, hopefully you can share that. I believe in front of you today, there was the brochure on Oregon crosswalk laws, Gwen pointed this out, and Christian ordered a bunch from the Department of Transportation, and so we'll be working to share this out with the public, both on social media, but just through different mechanisms where we can hand it out in person, so we can try to help people understand what the laws are and what the laws aren't, to help improve safety. Following up, actually, Council President Sims asked me, when we met last week, the status of the Third and Fern Ridge Crossing Grant, we did apply for a grant, and we will not hear back until December, so we don't know yet. I also wanted to let you know that Jennifer worked with Christian on a flyer that she's going to be distributing to businesses in downtown, to try to help inform them a little bit more proactively of what rules and responsibilities they have regarding signage and sidewalk responsibilities, flags, and vendor cafe permits. I wanted to make you aware of that, we'll send this out to council as well, but I just wanted to make you aware that these rules exist, and that we will be sharing these rules, hopefully in a proactive and friendly perceived way, but if you are asked by anybody about it, you know, let me or Jennifer know, and we can help facilitate conversations. And that was it.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Go ahead.
I just had a couple of follow-up questions, based on the stuff that you're saying.
Sure.
That list of rules, that's just, so can you explain that a little bit more, so that is that just basically to just re-inform business owners of their responsibilities for upkeeping their sidewalks and stuff?
Yeah, I think, and maybe Jennifer could speak a little bit more to this, but I think that some common themes and things with code enforcement that they were encountering, and then, I think I mentioned, or James mentioned in the weekly update recently, there is a sidewalk vendor permit requirement that hadn't been being enforced, and so we're starting to make sure that we're actually enforcing the things that we need to be enforcing. So, it's all stuff that's been on the books, and either has had some sort of confusion from business owners, or some issues with enforcement having to educate, and this is just a way to proactively go out and educate. Jennifer, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, that actually, that covers it, basically, I think that people are unsure, like, are they responsible for the upkeep of the sidewalk, and things like that, and they are, and then if they'd like to have, sell things on the sidewalk, they really need to get a permit, and also what they're allowed to have, like an A-frame sign, but then you shouldn't have it in an area where there's an intersection, kind of things like that, to just proactively tell them, "This is how you should do things if you'd like to do them, on the, you know, it's a public sidewalk, so you have to kind of follow the rules," and just let them know before we would, were to cite them.
Okay. And then, the question I had on just Mr. Loftus' comment, was that I would, like, just depending on what happens, I would like an update on what our lawyer says, and, yeah, just want to update on that.
Yeah, and I will figure out the best way to do that, I will consult with him on what he thinks the best way to do that is, because it is potentially a fine line between police response, potential litigation, so we'll figure out a way to update you in the way that was recommended by our attorney.
Because I want to know, I think, I know that's a difficult line, and a hard one to walk, but I think that's, it's going to be important to have some sort of informed response, because I want to honor the fact that I do think there are situations and times where, yeah, even just to know what we can do, right, I'm not even sure necessarily we can do exactly what he was asking us to do, so, to just kind of, as much as we can understand the situation, like from a legal perspective, what we can do, yeah, and I know that's going to be a difficult line to walk, but...
I will talk with him, and I am sure we can follow up with you in a way, and perhaps even, yeah, we'll, I will follow up with you either in an executive session, or via confidential email type of thing, so.
Okay, that makes sense.
Counselor Patty?
Hey, thank you so much. Hey Julia, I just had a general question about body-worn camera footage, is that exempt from public records disclosure?
I do not have that off the top of my head, but I've got a very knowledgeable record.
See, I bet you did, that was my bet.
I'm no expert, first of all, I think Gwen might be more of a, in the know than me, and so she can, if I say something wrong, or don't go far enough. It has to rise to a certain level of public interest, and so, there's some, I'm gonna let her come up, because I know that she's been, we've been working together on the request, and so I'll let Gwen expand on my very vague.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, so every contact that we have is recorded, so as you can imagine, we've got hundreds of hours of camera footage that's used for investigations and prosecutions, working with the DA's office, and then internally, obviously for training and education, and making sure we're doing things the right way and following policy. So... making sure we're doing things the right way and following policy. So, Oregon State Law recognizing that that is a significant amount of footage, and that it has to be redacted if it's pushed out to the public, has certain verbiage within their ORS to cover. And like Alyssa said, it's rising to a public interest, so public meaning more than a person.
Thank you for explaining that to me. It sounds like that's a lot of work to go through and review that, and make sure it's fit for public distribution, to me.
Yeah, and there's a process. I mean, so, in this case, and in any case, that it's denied under public records request, the person's advised on what the process is to have it reviewed, to see if it fits that standard.
And then, just since you're up here anyways, I just had a general question, and I'm not sure you can answer this, and if you can't, that's fine. Have you received any additional calls for service at the location that Mr. Loftus is referring to?
Oh, at the, yes.
Have they been for, like, suspicious persons, or anything like that?
Fall, well, so, in follow-up to the one he's referring to with Officer Pendell, Pendell actually was observing the person that later Loftus called in about, and we responded back to. So, it's interconnected, and he probably didn't have the previous knowledge that we had, obviously. So, we were in the area, because that's where the person of concern was at. Talking a little bit coded, hopefully that makes sense, but...
That does.
Yeah, and then we've had requests at the address that we responded to on the September date, because of previous suspicious activity, and wanting to make sure the property was safe.
I just want to say thank you for outstanding public safety services, as always. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I, not for you, Chief, but I had an additional question for Julia. So, what's the next, what are the next steps for Phillips Estates, if they're going to, the stop work order that's been going on for 10 years?
Yeah, so we are, they submitted some additional information that we are reviewing. Actually, I need to coordinate with Michael, so I can have a more formal and official response. But, we're actually talking about having a third-party reviewer who can focus on it, and actually doesn't maybe have quite as much history as, as our contract engineer work on reviewing it. It's a lot of data, a lot of information. We want to make sure it's correct. So, we're trying to help them move forward as quickly as they can. I think it's not quick enough in their mind, and I respect that, but we also need to make sure that we're following the process, and making sure that we're not creating more of a situation. So, we want to make sure that we're, we're doing it right, but we are trying to work through it so that they can move forward, because we are also very excited about lots getting developed, and potentially new development being able to happen beyond that.
Counselor Or.
To Counselor Sims' question, does any of that, is any of that going to go back through the Planning Commission?
Not for the Phillips Estate development, no.
No, the phases or anything?
What's been platted is platted, and so, what they're referring to, for the most part, is the lots that have a stop-work order on, where they can't build. There is a third phase that didn't go forward, that I believe they would have to go back through the process to plat those lots. So, that is another phase, and then there's also potentially some properties to the north that would develop as well.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, have anything else?
Counselor Or.
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge Mayor Quigley and his service to the community, and to say that it was a pleasure having him on the council and working with him the past few years. So, you will be missed.
I definitely second that. Counselor Gilio?
Yeah, I was going to say something in a similar vein. Yeah, I think Mayor Quigley just was an absolutely phenomenal mayor, who, I think, walked just an amazing line of just treating us, just treating everyone with such respect and dignity, and just working so hard, but also just consistently fighting for, on behalf of his constituents, for what he thought was right. And I just think that, yeah, just his servant's heart, his willingness to fight, and be kind, and do that in love, and is, it's such a good combination. And I think he's just absolutely excellent leader, was a phenomenal mayor, and, yeah, going to very much miss him.
I had one last thing to say. I wanted to thank Kim Dwyer for stepping up to the Public Arts Commission. She is everywhere. I sit in those Santee AM Integration Team meetings, and she is on a lot of stuff, so she's very busy, so I was really appreciative. And there's still two more openings left on the Public Art Commission, so if anybody wants to put in an application, that'd be great.
Do we have any other openings on our boards and commissions? Where could we, where could someone find that if they wanted to, and they were interested?
Off the top of my head, I can't, I'm feeling like we're fairly full on a lot of the boards and commissions, but if you go to our website, statenoregon.gov, it's under Government, and there's a Boards and Commissions page, and on that page is a list of all the boards and commissions, and under that, hopefully, we'll probably double-check that it's updated, but has the lists of vacancies.
Thanks. That's exciting to hear that we're almost...
And on that note, actually, I would love to see it be competitive. In the city I used to work for, we would solicit applications, we would get a slew, we'd have to interview people and make a selection, and I would be thrilled if we got that many people applying when we do have openings. And so, on that note, anybody can submit a, an application at any time, if they're interested in a specific board or commission, they could select that, or say all of them, and then when we do have openings, we could look at those as well. So, that would be really fun and awesome to be able to, you know, have, have more people than we need, and then we could find other ways, other places to utilize their desire for service to the community.
Can I ask you a question about that? So, if someone, because I had someone who was interested in the library board, Jenna, but all the positions are taken, so would that, like, their application be saved for the next round of renewals, possibly, or openings?
That's what, that's what I, yeah, that's what I would envision, yeah.
Mayor Protam?
Counsel Gilio?
Yeah, I just had one more follow-up question on, not even a question, more of a comment, on the Third and Fern Ridge sidewalk, I mean, not sidewalk, the crosswalk. Yeah, so when, when we, when we hear back from that, I'd love to get an update, and if it's not covered in a grant, I would love to look to actually at alternatives to what was proposed, because even though that was a very nice, ideal situation, I think that there are definitely other solutions that could cost less money and improve the situation. So, because I think right now, it's something, it's over like a million dollars, or something like that, the current proposal. So, I'm okay to make that. I want to make it a better situation, and if we can't make it ideal, that's okay, but I think I would really like it improved. So, once we get here back in December on the grant, I would love to just revisit that conversation with, with both the current proposal, but also, like, what can we do that's not going to, like, include widening the street, and, you know, some of these other things that I know are ideal, but, you know, I think there's improvements that can be made at less, so.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else? We are adjourned.